The Legislative Committee has worked hard. We cover five cities, as you know. Helen Chen, where is Helen? Right in front. Stand up Helen. Helen is our Chair this year for our Legislative Committee. She is also our liaison to the city of Temple City. Of those five cities that we cover, three of them have elections this year in March. And as we evaluated those three cities, we determined that Temple City was the one that was going to impact us the most. So we decided that we would have candidates for Temple City. Temple City has three open seats. They run at-large and they have five candidates on the ballot. We invited all five of them to be here today and two of them did not show up for one reason or another. So I am very grateful to the three of you that did show up, that came out. And it is also indicative of the types of campaigns that you're running and you seem to be the more serious of the five candidates. And we appreciate that. And then just a quick word to our membership. Of course, we all tend to be very involved politically and we have very strong political beliefs. But when we come together as Realtors, we ask that you look at things through your Realtor glasses and look out for the interests of real estate. And then keep in mind, of course, that they are our guests and we are appreciative that they are here and treat them appropriately. And hopefully we'll develop good relations with them when they are on the City Council. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to start by introducing each one. Well, let me start by introducing all three of them. Okay, first of all, we have Cynthia Sternquist, who is on the City Council, has been for six years. I was mayor last year and very good friend of the association and been out here numerous times to different events that we've had throughout the recent years. Nanette Fish, who is a Parks and Rec Commissioner and is running for council, I believe, for the first time. And then William Mann is the third one. And William is a civil engineer. I believe he worked for the County of Los Angeles.
Yes.
And this is your first run as well. So we're flattered to have all three of you here. And I'm going to give each of you two minutes. Tell us a little bit about yourself, why you're running, what you'd like to accomplish. All right, Cynthia, we'll start with you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, first of all, for giving all three of us the opportunity to come before you and share a little bit about what our vision is for the future of Temple City and how it personally and collectively makes an impact on what you do on a daily basis. I know that being the only incumbent, I will be here representing decisions that the council made collectively as a group and some that possibly have an influence on what you do. So I hope to be able to answer those questions frankly and honestly and give you a little bit of insight. Because of course, as Lee mentioned, he asked you to look through the discussion through Realtor's eyes. And I actually would like to piggyback on that. And I look at this through being a City Council member. And when I sit up on the dais, I have to make very difficult decisions that are representative of not just Realtors, but of residents, businesses, lots of special interest groups. So I ask you to be open-minded and listen. And if there's something that seems controversial, maybe I can give you a little bit of better insight from a City Council member's perspective. So thank you and I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you.
I'm Nanette Fish and I would first like to thank everyone for the invitation to be able to come and meet all of you. I am a 30-year resident of Temple City. I've been heavily involved with the city government as a Parks and Recreation Commissioner for the last 10 years and also numerous other organizations within the city. I raise my children there. I have a deep passion and a love for the community. I want to give and I want to serve. I actually have some experience, and I don't know if you, my colleagues know this, I actually did go to real estate school. I never got my license, but I did. And I know how hard all of you work to provide a great service. I truly think that the best thing that you can do for someone is to help them own their own home. The pride of ownership is something that you can give someone and they will always have that with them. So I would like to hear your concerns. This is my first time running. I am, also like Cindy, you do have to keep in mind that we are representing a lot of the community and a lot of different interest groups. I do believe that my experience with the City Council and with the Commission will help me be a good councilwoman. I would love to have your support and please contact me if you have any questions or concerns. I actually brought some flyers today. I have my email, my cellphone number, and I would love to hear from you. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is William Mann. And as Lee mentioned, I am a civil engineer for LA County Department of Public Works. So I could say that I understand one particular aspect of the real estate business from the construction and permitting standpoint. So I know all the hoops you guys have to jump through and I understand your headaches and heartburn that it gives you. And so I guess I want to say I empathize with a lot of what you guys have to go through and you guys do do a lot of hard work to help everyone fulfill their dreams of owning a home. And so I was lucky to have lived in Temple City since 1992. It's the only city that I truly call my home. And four years ago, I was able to buy my first home in Temple City. So that was one of the milestones in my life was I could finally have a place that I called my own. Another thing about me is having grown up here in the U.S., I'm lucky and blessed to be able to speak fluently both Mandarin and Cantonese. And as many of you know, that's one of the most common languages spoken in the San Gabriel Valley. So for me, communication is really key to anyone who wants to represent a large section of the population, especially Temple City. And I think communication is what allows everybody to really understand each other as well as work together. And so I see everyone sitting here as not only friends of everyone in Temple City, but also you guys are the ambassadors to everyone outside of Temple City. You are the reason why we have home values that have already exceeded the 2007 peak. I mean, you are the reason why Temple City is a place where everybody really wants to move their families into. I mean, we have great schools, we have great communities, we have one of the best public safety records, low crime rate. And so for me, I want to bring sort of that type of vision to the city. And I look forward to everyone's discussions and questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments from all three of you. We sent out a questionnaire and all three of you responded. And the first question was, what do you consider to be the most important issue facing Temple City today? And I'm going to ask each of you that question and we'll start with William and then work our way back this way.
All right, thank you, Lee. So the question is, what is the most important issue that I feel is in Temple City? And so being a civil engineer, my focus is on infrastructure. And I think that is really lacking in Temple City. For those of you who've been around for a while, our city has not really undergone that much change with the exception of the recent Rosemeat Boulevard project. And so for me, having great infrastructure, we're talking about well-maintained streets, enhanced streetscapes, improved facade improvements along our commercial corridors, that is very important to both the appearance and quality of life in Temple City as well as the economic revitalization efforts that we are undertaking. Now, I think one of the most important projects we have going forward is the Las Tunas Beautification and Revitalization Project. And I encourage everybody to really keep a close eye on those developments. A lot of things are still in concept, but for me, that is really the focus in the upcoming years is how do we move forward and get everybody together and collaborate on a joint vision of what the downtown portion of Temple City can truly become. And one important aspect of that is involving not only the business owners, but also the Realtors as well as the residents who are living in Temple City. Because together, we are the community. And if you leave one part out, you are not involving the entire community in that discussion. So as a civil engineer, I'm bringing sort of my expertise related to both the technical side as well as the regulatory side to our city. And hopefully, you know, since I work in an association known for having red tape, I want to help you guys cut through that red tape. Thank you.
Thank you, William. And I think we can look at these answers to a minute, if that's okay. I should have said that before.
I'm trying to remember what I wrote on the form. Actually, with Temple City, we have a great community. We have high property value, low crime rate, great schools. But being involved in the city, again, as a Commissioner, I believe the most important thing we need to do is we need to update our policies and procedures. A lot of things have not been updated since the 1960s. You may not know this, but the City Council and all of the Commissions, we review these policies, we review these rules. And it's very hard to move forward. I agree with William, infrastructure is number one, but when I say infrastructure, I mean the infrastructure of the city and the policies. In order to move forward with a great downtown, which is, I think, what we all want, it will bring much-needed business revenue, we do have to start at the beginning. We have to start with a strong base. We have to start with regulations. And no one likes to go back and redo these policies. It's a lot of work, it's very boring, and I will tell you, the City Council gets no credit for this because nobody wants to do it. Nobody will stay for these meetings. These are the meetings and everybody goes home. So I really think that for myself, that's going to be one of my priorities, is to make sure that a lot of these things are in place so that we can positively move forward with all of our endeavors, whether it's the downtown, whether it's a Rosemeat project, whether it's anything. You can't do it without having a strong base. Thank you.
One of the most pressing issues that I think encompasses both Mr. Mann's and Mrs. Fish's concerns is that Temple City is working with outdated, with an outdated general plan that hasn't been updated since the 1970s. And we're dealing with zoning ordinances that are in alignment with an outdated general plan and specific plan. So before we can look at the redevelopment or enhancement of Las Tunas, we need to take a good look at what our general plan is and how Las Tunas, the downtown commercial area, fits into the bigger picture. So the city is in the process now of working to develop a new general plan, which is the key to being, having a successful city. If you don't have a plan that is viable and pertinent to today, it's not going to make sense, no matter what we try and do. So we need to have, as Ms. Fish said, a foundation and a starting plan. So we are starting with our general plan, which is currently being updated. Zoning ordinances play a huge part, not only for the real estate business, but for getting businesses to come into Temple City. A business that might want to open in Temple City, but they might need a conditional use permit because they don't fit into the current general plan. So we need to be smart about how we move forward with community input in developing a strong general plan. And we have just finished our strategic plan, which was just adopted recently, which will guide us for the next 20 to 30 years. So I think that's where we need to start. And I would just like to address Mr. Mann's suggestion that infrastructure is extremely important in facing issues facing Temple City. Sore management, street pavement, but it all comes down to one thing, and I know you all know what that is. It's a paycheck. We need money. And where do we get the money to do those things? So that is the task that the current City Council has been diligently working with. How do we build our infrastructure in Temple City to sustain a viable city when the state has taken away redevelopment funds and local government is continually being challenged with where do we get money from? So thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next question had to do with point-of-sale mandates and I was impressed with all three of you having a good grasp of what those were. But those typically are the, trying to implement social changes or regulatory changes and enforce those at the time of sale of a piece of property. While we in organized real estate, NER and CAR, are the, we do two things. We look out for our industry, of course, but we also are the number-one advocate for homeownership and property rights. So while we promote homeownership, we're also at the center of the transaction in which to purchase the home. So you have a buyer and a seller. And then we bring those two together and we help in that transition. The point-of-sale mandates tend to complicate those, slow them down, create imbalances as to how these laws are being enforced or how these regulations are being enforced. And while we typically do not disagree with the intent of what the cities or counties are trying to accomplish, we do oppose the method in which they go about doing it and feel that it places unfair burden on both the buyers and the sellers. So I do appreciate your response to those, but I'm going to go ahead and ask you and give you each a minute to respond. If based with a proposal for a point-of-sale mandate, what other types of solutions might a local government consider to achieve its goal? Nanette, we'll start with you this time, if that's all right.
Well, I do understand that when you are buying a home, it is very stressful. And one of the main reasons it is so stressful is money. Most people are putting every dime that they've ever saved into that down payment. And that's their dream, to have that house. It's unfortunate that there are some mandates. I do know that they are put in place for certain reasons. I'm not sure if I agree 100% with them having to be done by the time the sale is finalized. I don't know what this, really, the city could do by maybe giving them an extension. I believe, what is escrow, 30, 60, 90 days, depending on the project, depending on what needs to be done. But I do believe in the owner's property rights. They are the owner, they are selling it. I guess it would depend on what needs to be fixed. You know, if it's something that can be fixed between the seller and the buyer, then they needed to sign that. So I guess what I'm saying is I would much rather have someone be able to buy their home than have to stress out about having all of these ordinances, or having all of these mandates filled. Like I said before, I think homeownership is the best thing that you can do for someone. And it's something that we really have to encourage. Am I out of time? Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Who do you want?
Either way, William.
I'm just giving you the microphone because...
Mr. Mann.
All right, this is an excellent question. Because, you know, like Lee said, some cities are trying to achieve a broader social role and then they use it, sometimes they try to implement that through these point-of-sale mandates. And so what I feel about that is sometimes that places an unfair burden on the, either, I believe, the home seller or the home buyer. And so the question is, what are some of the solutions we as a city can come up with? And I think there are several things we can look at. Some cities have voluntary programs where the entire purpose of it is to educate the homeowner and the homebuyer about things that is better for them as a homebuyer. Like for example, teaching them about retrofitting their toilets or installing low-flow toilets. Those are things that I think, in your experience, if you inform the homeowner about it, they will understand the good that it is for them and that they would actually do it themselves. So why make it a point-of-sale mandate when most people will probably comply if you tell them all the benefits? Because you're buying a property, you want the best for yourself. So the key is education, informing everybody that there are these alternatives that you can take to improve your home. Other things that we can do is offer incentive programs as well as city-assisted programs. We have, there are certain cities that offer rebates for installation of low-flow toilets as well as other upgrades that you may have. And so I think that we need to think outside the box besides looking only at point-of-sale mandates. One specific example I can think of is I have a friend who lives up in Northern California and their city requires them to do a sewer lateral inspection before they can sell their home. And what they found out was that it was deficient by standards and a replacement would have cost them additional $4,000 to $5,000. Now, for some people, that is a lot of money. It is no joke. And so that can potentially make the difference between whether or not they make that sale. So I hope that summarizes sort of my view on point-of-sale mandates. Thank you.
First of all, being an investor myself, I learned at a very young age the value of investing in real estate. My father was an LA County civil engineer for 30-some years and always dabbled in real estate, got his real estate license when he was a very young man and worked on weekends selling real estate besides his Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 job. And so I am not in favor of point-of-sale mandates. I learned from my dad and to be wise and with the dollar. And I own nine homes. Five in Temple City, two in South Pasadena that are part of a family trust, and then two in Whittier. So this very much would affect me more on a personal level as far as and on a local level. I do feel that there are so many intrusions that our state government imposes on local government to sometimes enforce without giving us the solutions or even the funding to help these programs. They basically say, this is something you need to enforce in your city, now go out and do it. Well, if you don't have the staff or the funding, it's very, very difficult. I think that there are ways for local cities or local government and city officials to bring to residents those programs that are available for energy saving, low-flush toilets, drought-resistant gardens. There are grant monies, Southern California Edison, a lot of major players in the game for energy efficiency start with them. And they have a lot of programs. And I'm pleased to say that in Temple City, I most recently brought our Metropolitan Water District to the forefront and said, we need to partner with you. What can we do to assist you to help make a drought-tolerant program in our city viable? So there are things that are in place and those are the things that I think it's a responsibility of local government to do. I don't think it's up to the Realtors to have to try and fight this, you know, on a state level. And I had mentioned to Lee that one of the ways that we can help as elected officials with these mandates is to actually help you and be a voice for you at the local level when you go to Sacramento and you talk to people about these issues and how they're affecting your business. So you need to reach out to us. I'm happy to say that I would love to be a liaison from my city to the Board of Realtors where I come, I get involved, I hear firsthand what the issues are. And when you do go as a group to Sacramento, that you take local government officials that believe in what you're doing with you to be a voice for the local government. You're not going to get it on the state level. We are frustrated as local city officials with more and more impositions on what cities have to do that affect our local businesses. So reach out to us, we're here. I come to most of the events that you have because I do have not just the local responsibility to my residents to be informed, but I also have a personal investment here for my, you know, my children and yours down the road. So I think that there are ways that local government can inform Realtors and Realtor Boards on those programs that can assist you and assist homeowners.
Thank you. Okay, in the interest of time, I'm going to drop down to a question I think is one of the most relevant in this election. Cynthia, I'm going to start with you and you know why.
I do know why.
But this has to do with a recent proposal in the city of Temple City where they would assess a fee, which I would tend to think of as a tax, but they call it a fee.
Don't say the word "tax."
They would affect new developments in the city of Temple City and go to their art fund to be used in the beautification of Temple City. Obviously, those of us in real estate have a number of concerns and they would range from deterring investment in the community, making it more costly to build in the community, the cost of then get passed on to the homeowners. Home affordability is one of our largest issues at CAR and NAR. So it's kind of, that's how we look at it through our lenses, but I understand that you look at it differently. And so what do you think of that tax? And perhaps you can even clarify it a little bit.
So we'll be here, we can each have a half hour on this. It's very difficult to sum up in a minute, so if you, especially being the...
I'll give you extra time.
Thank you.
That would help.
It would. First of all, most recently, as Tuesday, it came before the City Council to approve a fee.
Got it right.
A fee. A fee on new development projects and new single-resident developments. Now, the question, as worded spoke to, it does have an impact on buyers and sellers. I would agree to some extent, but we are not imposing this fee directly on, say, Mr. Mann, who came to purchase a home, or Ms. Fish wanted to sell her house. And we said, well, you have to pay this public fee out of your escrow monies. Or the seller has to depen... you have to pay this public fee out of your escrow monies or the seller has to deposit extra monies as a fee. So it's an indirect, indirectly it does affect the real estate market. I will say that Temple City is very unique in that, and you know that. How many of you know of, you know, how many houses there are for sale in Temple City? Not a lot. You're all competing for a very small percentage of the market. And when I say competing, I mean that is your paycheck. You wake up in the morning and you're going to go knock on doors, pass out flyers, put your name, as I always tease Helen, if someone says, who's Helen Marks and I said, look at her on the shopping cart. You know, so you do what you need to do to ensure that you are going to be the person that is called, the Realtor, to get a listing or to find a home for someone. Price in Temple City currently doesn't seem to meet the same criteria as in neighboring cities. People seem to want to pay more than what is asked. Would you agree for a home in Temple City? You're going to have numerous people bidding on a home. So we, the council as a group knows that. When we came into this idea, you know, two years ago that we needed to establish a public arts component to our city, one of the reasons for that was because we were revitalizing our downtown, not our downtown, our Rosemead Boulevard with public art and public art, art enhancements. The money for the public art came from grant money that came from the Metro Call of Grants and other grants that the city diligently solicited and was granted. So that grant money helped pay for the public art. Well, we said, we need to have a public art commission so that we have some direction as to where the art goes. So we, two years ago, with lots of community input, said, yes, the community wants a public art commission. They want public art in Temple City. So now we're two years into the game, Rosemead Boulevard has been completed and we have a public art commission that has no money. The residents wanted public art. New residents, you know, residents that had been there for 30 years, they wanted public art. So we went forward. The city is willing to put up the same 1% fee that we're asking new developments and single family residents over a certain threshold. So we're doing it as a partnership with everybody having a stake in the game that will improve Temple City. If the city is even approved more than what we have now, we feel that it's realistic to say that Temple City's marketplace will maybe level off at some point. It's got to level off. But it doesn't mean people are going to stop coming and developing in our city or building single family homes. The majority, 97% of the single family homes that are being built in Temple City right now are not owner occupied. They are, have been purchased by a developer who is going to build a single family home, turn around and sell that home and make a huge profit. It is the developer of that individual residence that is paying a small 1% fee on that development. I don't think that 1% fee is going to deter people from developing in Temple City. I also will say that it takes three votes on a city council for things to pass and there was a very lengthy discussion. And as a city council member, I often have to make decisions that are based on the entirety of the situation, the residents, what I want my city to look like, the vision, the effort that this council has put forward to making Temple City right now a very desirable place for people to want to come to live. Yes, we are worried about affordability of the homes, but as long as the dollar is dictating what people will pay, we don't have much choice in, in who pays what for a home in Temple City. We can't impose and say, well, you know, everybody's got to pay only up to $1 million for a home. So I think our city speaks for itself as a place where people want to be and want to come and I think that public art is an important part. I will say that I voted to reduce the thresholds for single family residents and commercial businesses so that our small business owners are not heavily impacted. So just to give you perspective, if I was remodeling my home, I would have to have a $500,000 investment in the remodel before this tax would even, or, ooh, set that word, before this fee, but we all know what it, what the bottom line is, before this fee is imposed. I don't think there's one remodel in Temple City where someone is spending $500,000. So if you have more specific questions, I'd be happy to talk to you after the debate.
Appreciate that. Thank you for that sister request. And then, Mrs. Fish, would you like to tackle that one? And we'll cut these ones shorter if you don't mind.
First of all, I am, I am in support of this fee, especially at this time. This is a crucial time for Temple City. We are going through and doing our redevelopment project on Las Tunas. We do need more businesses. We need to make the city more attractive for businesses. I think public art will do that. We need to also attract people to shop in our downtown. We are missing, that is a crucial part that we are missing in our, in our little city. We have all these wonderful things, like I said, high, high property values, great schools, low crime, but we have no downtown. And if the downtown is planted, no one is going to come and invest millions of dollars. We have to keep it attractive. We have to keep it up to date. I think public art is a big part of redevelopment in all of our major, major cities all over the country. We have to stay up to date with those. We, again, with council member, this was a hard decision. The council meeting where they discussed this was over five hours long. It was not something that they took and made a very quick decision. It was hours and hours and hours of discussion and I know because the three of us were there listening to it. These decisions are hard, but they are for the good of the community. They are to, and we would hope they would be good for you. You want Temple City to be attractive. That's going to help you sell homes. It's going to help you make money. So like I said, it is a small fee. I don't think, again, that it's going to impact a whole lot of people, but we have to continue our public art program just so that we can make Temple City a viable place to come and live and have a business. And that's what we're missing right now is the business district.
Thank you, Mrs. Fish. Mr. Mann?
Yeah, like Ms. Fish said, that hour was about five hours long and I think we were all falling asleep by the end of it, so hopefully no one's falling asleep right now. But yes, public art, I think, let's sit back and look at the bigger picture here. What are we trying to achieve? We are trying to build the future of Temple City. I mean, the Las Tunas beautification project is part of that vision. And that vision, as I said before, requires a collaborative effort by all entities who have an interest in Temple City. And that includes residents, businesses, as well as developers, Realtors like yourselves. So the question becomes, where does that money come from? And that's the hardest question to answer. Now, we've had the recent development over that Linden Walk over by Lower Azusa and I believe a portion of, what was negotiated within that deal was that the developer agreed to devote a certain portion of the monies to the public art commission. And so that's how it got started along with a lot of the grant money from Rosemead Boulevard. So I think there are lots of alternatives that we can also consider and not focus on one thing. I think the fee is important in the sense that we do need a steady stream of revenue and I think it requires a collaborative effort to really come to a decision as to what is considered reasonable, right? We're, we're not here to stymie growth and economic development. It's the exact opposite, like both council members, Sturquist and Ms. Fish have brought up, we are investing in our city. And investment, as she says, we're not, we're walking in the walk and not, not just telling everybody else to pay. All capital improvement projects that the city is going to develop, we're going to put in 1% of that value into the public art as well. So everyone's got skin in the game and I think it's important to really consider where exactly is that threshold? I mean, this is still all for discussion. I mean, we're, this is not finalized yet. There's still discussions about where, where does that threshold exist where once you exceed that threshold, you start being subject to this fee. And what we don't want is, we don't want to hit the mom and pop shops that are in, in Temple City. We don't want to hit the single family residences who have barely enough money to redo their home to be subject to this. So the question is, where is that level? And I think that's the next question that truly needs to be answered and we need everybody's help in answering it.
Thank you, Mr. Mann, and I'm going to give you the last word. Thank each of you, the three of you for coming today. Thank each of you for your willingness to run for city council and your willingness to serve and dedicate the time that we understand it takes to be on council. Because we are over, I'm not going to, I'm not going to have any questions, but you did say that you were willing to stay after, so hopefully, hopefully we can have, we'll have an opportunity individually to ask you because I know both Carla and Bob are going to have good questions, so hopefully you'll allow that. And thank you again for coming. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.